WinCam, can you maybe just give us a thumbs up when you're ready for recording? All set? Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd. Pleased to be with you to present the summary of the Winchester High School Gymnasium Refloring and Renovation Project. It was just funded by town meeting a couple of weeks ago. We pledged at the time we would have a community meeting for anybody who had questions about the project. So, very quickly with some introductions, and you'll be hearing from some of these folks tonight. With us is Mark Aria, the District Athletic Director from Tape Architects, Chris Blessin, who's Principal in Charge, John Fallon is here tonight, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Frank Hackett, Superintendent of Schools, Dennis Mahoney, Principal at Winchester High School, my colleague Jay Nardone, Chair of the EFPBC, is joining me tonight. Very quickly with respect to the project team, so of course we have the architect, the engineers work under the direction of the architect, and we're also working with the district and with DPW. So, Chris Conway, Pete Lawson, and others will be a part of this process as the design continues. We have a working group from the EFPBC. It includes Mr. Nardone, myself, Mark Scott, and Geetha Mathi Alikan, and that's just really for some periodic drawing review and scope checks and interacting with Tape. And then Meg White from the Towns Engineering and Planning Department is really helpful and essential for us. She manages the advertising of projects and contracting and so forth. So, very quickly, we'll go over project scope overview. It'll be familiar to those who were here for town meeting. There will be a quick overview of the refloaring and reconfiguration of the space. I'll spend just a couple of minutes talking about the existing and why we're doing the job, and turn it over to Chris Blessin to help you envision what it's going to be like when it's finished. I'll have a few closing thoughts about project budget and schedule, and then our administrators can just say a few words about logistics in the fall as the project gets moving forward. So, just to kick this off very quickly, the existing floor is a rubberized sheet good, and we propose to replace it with an athletic maple floor with shock pads tying to the concrete. There will be some equipment replacement, but only where required. So, we'll be relocating as much equipment as possible if it's in good shape, including, I think, 10 backboards, Chris, that are currently mounted to the structure up above. And then the big sort of change for this space in addition to the wood floors, we're going to be turning our competition spaces 90 degrees, and you'll understand why here in just a moment. So, why do we even need to replace the floor? So, first of all, the floor was not replaced during the big Winchester High School renovation project. When the MSBA invited us to partner on this project, the floor was about four and a half years old at the time, was actually in pretty good shape. These rubberized floors typically don't last much more than 15 or 16 years, and this summer ours will be 19 years old, so it's time to go. It's delaminating from the substrate. You see that blistering there in the images. The surface is worn smooth, and it's not just that appearance of wood that's worn away, but the texture itself that gives you some friction when you're playing on the surface, that's worn away as well. So, that can become an issue for injury, and we want to avoid that. And then, of course, the seams themselves are separating and can become a trip hazard. So, a detail here actually on the right is one of Mr. Blessin's. We have a structural concrete slab there today. When that rubber floor comes out, what Chris is designing is a true resilient floor over sleepers and shock pads that'll connect back to that concrete. So, imagine kind of a subfloor underneath. So, we're not putting wood directly on concrete. So, there'd be a lot of give for our student athletes. I probably should also say, I mean, is it right, Mark, every other district in the Middlesex League, if not the vast majority, have a wood athletic floor like what we're proposing to put in?
All except two.
All except two. So, you know, our student athletes are competing on a wood surface, and so now they'll be able to do that at home and practice as well. And then the other interesting thing is with this investment, we expect to get well over 40 years out of the wood floor. So, the second, third components sort of interrelated to one another. I mentioned some equipment replacement and relocation. The bleachers, many of the bleachers are broken. The motors have seized. They're in peculiar places in the gym. Good equipment that can be relocated will be. And we have some new MIAA rules regarding seating capacity for postseason play that are impacting us here at the high school. So, today, we don't meet the seating capacity requirements for basketball beyond round one, and new rules have been voted for volleyball that will come into effect next year as well. So, that means if our student athletes are going deep into the postseason and we are the host team or the home team, we may not be able to host a game here. So, I just want to take a minute and talk about the existing configuration. So, the room is split in half with a divider curtain. When it's down, we have four practice courts, two on the left, two on the right, oriented sort of north-south, if you will. The backboards drop down from the trusses above, but these practice courts are not regulation in size. So, we cannot hold actual contests on these courts. We have seven bleacher sets. We've got two large ones that accommodate a little over 300 spectators. We have two medium ones that are a little over 150, and three small ones that are just under 100. But for games, we have a different arrangement. For games, remember, these are not regulation size. So, for games, we actually use the right side of the space, and we turn the competition, turn the court, if you will. So, this is a regulation-sized court for basketball and volleyball, with plenty of space on the sides for teams, the bench, officials, equipment, and so forth. And then, of course, sort of a diagram here to give the illustration, we need to have space for spectators. I mentioned some of the bleachers we have are broken. So, the set up above, that medium set with the yellow X, it breaks every couple of weeks. It has an out-of-order sign right now. The set with the red X on the other side of the curtain has been an operative for a while now. And then the three on the left, the white X, really are just in a peculiar place and certainly can't support spectators when we have a major event on the right side. And I'm also just kind of illustrating when you do extend them, how they conflict even with those practice courts today. So, Mr. Aria, you know, has done some counting. We have just under 400 seat capacity today in our competitive space, which is obviously underneath the, well, under the MIAA rule for postseason play. So, the project is really all about a reconfiguration. So, I'm going to ask Chris Blessin to come up and talk about what that looks like.
All right. Thank you. So, the current gym, as Chris said, we want to reconfigure that, and one of the goals that we had was to get a walking track or running track inside the gym that's striped out on the outside of the play surfaces. And so, that is one goal that we're going to keep, and you can see in this diagram that sort of initial layout. And then you have the bleacher sections on the two ends, and you'll see those deploy in various concepts and schemes. But the big sort of overarching goal here is to get the gym divided into quads. And so, you've got four regulation-sized courts that can hold basketball, volleyball, and then the little squares you see in there are the 38 by 38 wrestling configurations. And so, you can get four full-size competition mats, four full-size regulation courts for all sports situated in this. And you can, the big black lines there are divider curtains, and I've got a couple images following that show that. You've got one in the gym right now, but we're suggesting you keep one in the middle and then do two side dividers, and that really gets the gym divided up into quads. And you can really, both for PE purposes and athletics, have a sort of robust environment for sports and active movement. This is an image of two competition courts deployed out, so you can have, you know, two sides going with bleachers that serve just either side. Again, the wrestling mats are shown there, so you can get two matches going on each side for total four, and you can just have the one divider curtain in the middle. We would also propose adding scoreboards so that you can get all the scoreboards. If you run two basketball, volleyball, whatever events you're running, we have the two scoreboards that run independently, so you can actually have, aside from volume of cheering, you can have completely separated spaces there. One thing I wanted to note is that part of this process is going to be to make access to things like wrestling mats, stuff that's hoisted up high, make it a little bit safer and easier to use by bringing them down to the court. And these images just show some things that are available for managing things like wrestling mats down low so that it's easily, easy or accessible to those who are using it without having to rely on overhead systems and things like that. So, this diagram is showing the main competition court. So, the idea here is to be able to take one set of bleachers. We think it's the ones that are on the left side of this image. And once they're extended, you can actually drive them out further, so you can get that MIAA-sized court for any of the sports that you're trying to host, volleyball, basketball, wrestling, anything you need can happen with that arrangement just by extending the bleachers fully out. These are just some images of some gyms that have been completed recently from our work. The one here is a high school. There actually is an elevated running track, but this is, this one hosts 1,000 seats in it and has a bunch of equipment up top, but just some, just pay attention to the floor. That's what we're getting at. So, we'll get to the ability to paint out the floor, stripe it, add all kinds of things that do school spirit. Here's another one, same idea, just showing you that the wood floors are nice and sturdy, and they can hold a lot. This image, I didn't have one of these curtains deployed, but you can see in the top, the quadrant approach for how the curtains look when they're up. And then when they're down, it just is four quadrants there of space, right? And then the bleachers are all tucked away and out of sight, out of mind, but this one would have the four quadrants in this gym as well. And then again, just fully deployed curtains. You have some in there now, but we would replace those with new ones. And the bottom is usually a solid, and the top is a mesh, so that you've got some visual clarity between those sections. So, that's really what we're after for the reconfiguration, and then we'll follow that with some looking at systems like electrical and things like that that just sort of bring the space up to current standards. And, but, other than that, it's all floor-based, and I'll hand it back over to Chris for budget.
Chris, forgive me. Did you mention what the capacity is for each of those bleacher sets?
The long ones, I believe we're looking at about 750.
750, right? So, 700 to 800 each. So, if we were to split it in half, we can run competitions on either side simultaneously, and we could accommodate between 700 and 800 spectators. We could also, in a large event, drive that set over that Chris was showing, and we could have, you know, 1,500, 1,600, or more spectators for a really special event. So, some pretty incredible flexibility. Thank you, Chris. So, just a few closing thoughts here. These are taxpayer dollars. So, for those who want to know what was the cost and where my tax dollar's going, Chris and his team did some preliminary work on this last year on a small conceptual study through the EFPBC, and back in August had an estimate of construction cost of just over $2 million for the work. That's construction cost. That's not project cost. So, a lot of soft costs are not included in that. Contingencies are not included. And that was back in August of '23. So, at that time, the Select Board had an interest in potentially moving forward on this project. We did not have these resources available in the capital or building stabilization fund. We had some other higher priority projects at the time, and we really appreciate the interest and support of the Select Board. So, we projected actually last summer $2.4 million project cost, and that's with some escalation to bidding in the spring, meaning like a month ago. So, we're obviously a little past that. And so, the Select Board, in its wisdom, back in, what, January, February, John, kind of made an inside baseball decision with the town manager. For our purposes, let's call it a $2.6 million project. That is a very conservative number, and we're hopeful it'll come in substantially under that. What we don't spend just comes back to the coffers. So, I mentioned the Select Board. They actually allocated $1.4 million in ARPA funding towards the project. There are some restrictions on ARPA funds. They have to be dedicated. I'm looking at John or Rich on. They have to be dedicated by December this year, and they actually have to be used by the following year. So, we're talking about projects that are basically shovel-ready, which this one is. So, that was really helpful. But as you can see, we were still $1.2 million short of what we needed. So, we came to Spring Town Meeting just a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Fallon and I requested $960,000 from the overlay account and $240,000 in free cash to make up that difference, and Town Meeting supported it unanimously, which was terrific, and we appreciate that. Next steps, first bullet is why we're here now. We pledged we would come out and talk to the community about this, answer any questions. The Select Board, part of that ARPA funding included some money for Chris Blessin and his team to get going. So, they're not just now getting out of the blocks, which is good, because we're really interested in moving the project forward quickly. So, Tape Architects is planning on having bid documents for this project complete by the end of June, hopefully have a contractor onboard at the end of July, and work will be underway in August. But it's not a project that's going to take a couple of weeks, so this will impact the fall. We will still be holding elections here at Winchester High School. We have a state primary. I think it's September 3, and then the presidential election in November. The district is working with the town clerk so that we will hold the election in the commons and maybe some ancillary support spaces, like maybe the music practice rooms over here for a couple of precincts. If you voted in the special election on the water field question a couple of years ago, you'll be sort of familiar with what that arrangement is going to look at, look like. But Chris is actually going to work with the town clerk, because our plan is to get elections back into the gym when the project's done. So, a part of this actually includes bringing power where our town clerk needs it for our voting machines, and we'll coordinate that with all the athletic uses in the space as well. And our friends at WinCam have also expressed an interest in sitting down with the architect, because they broadcast a lot of our competitions, and so we'll include them as well, so they have all the infrastructure that they need. We expect the floor should really be completed by Thanksgiving, the full project. We're hopeful will be completed in December in plenty of time for the winter season. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mark Aria, if he has a voice. You do? You're good. Like, Mark, just talk a little bit about some of the logistics that are going to be needed in the fall to support the project. And then we'll hear from Dennis Mahoney, our principal, about impact on physical education, and we'll throw it to Frank Hackett for any closing thoughts.
Yes, thank you. So, the only program that this really affects would be the girls' volleyball program in the fall. And it's not, it's not much different from what we dealt with when the school project was being done, and we had to relocate to McCall and VO for practice, and McCall for matches. So, we plan on doing that. I've already been working with Coach John Fleming on practice plans and times for the use of McCall and VO. And we think it will be, you know, the McCall gym is great. It's a great atmosphere to host a volleyball game, so it's not taking anything away. With the seating we have now in the gym, the way it is, we have about the same, roughly about the same seats at McCall for a match right now, anyway. So, that'll work out, and that's pretty much it. Our cheer team goes offsite, has gone offsite for practice. They'll have their tryouts in June, which they normally do in the gym, and yeah, we'll be good. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mahoney for phys ed stuff.
Good evening, everybody. In terms of physical education, this is something that our veteran staff has been through before when we went through the rebuild of WHS. So, the inconvenience is absolutely worth it in their eyes in order to get a state-of-the-art facility that they were hoping to get about 10 years ago. It forces you to be creative. It forces you to be inventive, and in the last couple of years taught us anything, when we're forced to be creative and inventive, we come out even better for it. So, the PE teachers, again, most of them have been here for close to 20 years, if not longer. They have reinvented what they were doing during 2015, 2016, 2017, and they also recently did it during 2020. We are very confident that the PE classes will look different, but they'll be creative, and I'm sure the kids will get a lot of fresh air, which is just as important as moving as well.
Not many closing thoughts, but I appreciate you coming out. We're super excited about this. We see it not just as a great addition to our own programming internally, but as a community resource. And I was thinking about how last year we did graduation inside, the year before, maybe it was the year before last year, and just the arrangement that we had to pull off to make that happen, and the lack of seating, and where people had to sit so far away from, so the flexibility is going to make a huge difference for all kinds of things, and I think things that we don't even anticipate. Of course, I'm hopeful, I think probably as others are, this might also turn into some revenue generation, that we might be able to find ways that, because of the flexibility, that we might be able to rent the spaces differently than we do now. And we're also excited for the community basketball program, youth basketball, and all the other youth sports that we'd be able to house in a different way. So, we see it as a tremendous asset for the school department, for our athletic program, eventually for our PE program, but also as a community, community resource. So, thank you for coming out. I don't know if you're going to questions, Mr. Nixon, but if you are, I'm going to sit down quickly.
If there, if there are questions, we have, we have a mic over there, but they're not, you know, we can also, if you want to ask a question, I can just sort of repeat it. Yeah?
Is there going to be HVAC or electrical work or sound work?
So, the question is, will there be HVAC, electrical work, or sound work? Not much with respect to HVAC. Well, let me just back up. There's a number of, and if Jay, you should pop up if I don't answer this correctly, but we have a number of building systems, mechanical, electrical, fire protection that are there now, and some of those devices, some of those junction boxes are going to have to move anyway just to accommodate the reconfiguration. There will be some electrical work. We're going to be providing huddle cameras in those, certainly in the two halves, if not the four quarters, to support our youth, youth athletes. And then we'll have some pretty substantial communications and tell data scope, again, really to support the folks at WinCam who broadcast our games today. But we're not putting like, we're not air conditioning the space or something, so no major mechanical work in there, no. Another question.
I think also we asked about sound. Is there any speakers or that sort of?
Well, speakers. Chris, you want to talk about the audio piece? Or Mark?
Yeah. The plan wasn't to change. Hi. So, the plan wasn't to change the way the sound, the current sound system. We have been working on improvements lately. So, we do have new wireless microphones that currently working. Hopefully, they will stay that way. I've been guaranteed that they will. So, I think we're good with sound. I think I figured out a way to maximize the, I mean, get the best possible sound we can in the gym. You just have to shut some off, turn some, you know, turn some other ones on, but the sound is fine when it's set up correctly. So, there wasn't any plan to do anything with the sound system. It was to keep the same sound system that's there now.
And I also wanted to ask a question about volleyball. So, we said that practices will be at VO and games will be at McCall, or is that still?
So, the question was, will practices be at VO and games be at McCall? Practices, but will be at both McCall and VO depending on the level. So, sometimes the subvocity program will, subvocity teams will practice at VO when we need that space. All the matches will be at McCall.
Can you talk a little bit about the contingencies for the winter sports? So, you know, construction commonly slips in deadlines. What happens if we get to December, even January, and the project is not finished? Is there contingencies for McCall in case no one, or basketball?
Do you want to talk about timeline, or? So, the question was, what are the contingencies for the winter sports if the project goes into December or even January?
So, I guess the way I would answer that is, and we spoke a little bit about this at town meeting a couple of weeks ago, this is a project that the flooring contractors might call a summer slammer. There are many districts that look to do this kind of work, literally starting the day that summer starts, and it's done by the first day of school. So, there's a window. And this happens throughout the state. A lot of contractors are skilled at getting this work done and this scale of work done on that timeframe. So, we're really, I would, I guess I would say our contingency is we've actually provided a longer timeframe, because we're looking to actually get somebody in here in August. We think that'll actually be really appealing to some contractors, because particularly the flooring folks, they're generally, they're done by August, if you think about it. It's all, it's the other folks that kind of come in when the floor is finished at all those other districts. So, we think this actually has a lot of appeal. So, our timeline is actually a bit longer when you think about when the winter season needs to begin. So, I think just as a project team, I guess we would answer that by saying we've simply provided what we think is a very generous project schedule, and given that other districts get this kind of work done over a shorter period of time over the summer, just kind of have some confidence about that, I guess.
So, the question was, are there plans to put in badminton lines in the gym? Right now, the original plan was not to put badminton lines in. That's also, we need to talk more with phys ed staff about their needs. I mean, we've had initial discussions with them. So, the original plan, right, is those lines are not included. Yeah, so right now, I would say those lines, badminton lines are not included in the plans. Right now, the lines would be volleyball, basketball, the walking track.
Can you talk about what the lines would look like for basketball? Right now, we have one main court, two minor courts, and I saw in one way I showed a main court being on the right-hand side, so what would the lines look like?
So, the question was, what will the lines look like in the new space? So, currently, there are four unofficial-sized courts going the length of the gym. And one, there's one official-sized basketball court and volleyball court in the gym, the way it is now. The other volleyball court, we actually, I actually tape it out at the beginning of every season. So, if you, that's the current layout. So, again, the two courts on the left are not official. The only official-sized court is on the right for basketball and volleyball. The new design would be, so the new design would be on the right would be official-sized. Both sides right now have official volleyball, basketball courts, and the inside squares on each layout would be wrestling mats, so you can fit two on each side. You could probably fit, squeeze in a third wrestling mat if you push it off the sides of the court. Probably fit six wrestling mats in there if you needed to. So, these are the quarters. So, now you'd have four official-sized volleyball courts and basketball courts. So, in total, you'd have six, right? Six official-sized volleyball courts, basketball courts. You can't use six at the same time. You can either use these four at the same time in the quarter setup, or two at the same time with the gym split in half. And with the gym split in half, you could host two lodge events at the same time.
So, I did, with this layer here, I just come up and turn, we're just going to view basketball, basketball, right, so the two courts that we have now, there's three point lines, they're not regulated. So, I guess maybe walk us through what is the plan to offset this standpoint, because I understand for these four courts, there's a, you know, not a rapid point, if you're going to, you know, just possibly revenue generator, I mean, a couple of all different high schools in the year except Winchester, and it's this layout, and there's four, you know, AAU games going on in the spring, or the fall, the weekends, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sundays. So, what is the, what is the potential for these four courts? Are we going to have three-point lines for regulation?
Yes. So, the question was, will these courts all be regulation courts? And yes, the answer is yes. They'll all be regulation-sized basketball courts, full-size three-point lines, basketball courts, and again, volleyball courts, official-sized volleyball courts.
One issue we have in the basketball is, it was two small courts where the benches are, are working, they're on space. So, I saw one in here, I mean, you have the bleachers coming out on either side. So, with the zoom and the wiring and sort of floss and benches would be on the exterior of each court versus against the, the drop curtain, correct?
Yeah. So, questions about where the scoreboards go and the power and benches? Yeah. So, we need to program that out and just pick the best spot for it. We don't have it pinned out exactly at this moment, but with wireless scoreboards, that question is kind of a little bit less difficult to deal with. I think we need to talk through benching strategies and stuff like that for the four-court option, because obviously you can't. because obviously you can't necessarily bring out the full gamut of bleachers. You could bring out a row or two, which is kind of interesting about these is you could bring out like two rows, but they're at the end of the courts instead of the sides, which are the optimal seating spots. So there's some strategies we need to just talk through. But I think you'll find that they're pretty flexible to do what you need to do.
Is there also a plan, which I think I heard previously, to have smaller bleachers on the north and south side, if you will, that some level of roads, or is that still to be?
No, the bleacher strategy is that, pretty much. There's no, we could get rid of the other smaller companion bleacher stacks because they're broken and.
Understood.
Yeah.
I thought there was some discussion about having smaller bleachers on the walls potentially for three rows or four, you know, some smaller levels. That's not even in the works.
So it could be, there's potential for that moving forward. It's not in the current plan. But where the old bleachers were up against the, like, you can see the spaces to the bottom of the screen and the top of the screen where the bleachers were, there is potential to put a bleacher with one or two rows there for the four main court, for the four quadrant courts. But that needs to be explored a little bit further. But the potential could be there.
I gather there's also space for people if they come in with chairs, which happens at a lot of places if all four courts are going to sit on the sides.
Yes.
Sorry.
If you can go back to the configuration where you divide it up into quarters?
Sure.
Yeah. Would that allow for simultaneous practicing of both the wrestling team and the basketball?
So that's something we have to talk about program wise with all the teams. We have to sit down with all the coaches from all the different programs and figure out a plan, because this is new to all of us, right? So we have to figure out a plan moving forward, how practices will look, time slots and all those things. Because the, there's a, you know, much greater potential with this setup than it ever has been in the past. So we have to talk about that with all the coaching staff. But absolutely, I mean, there's a lot of different things that could, you know, take place with this new setup.
I know you're aware of this, Mark, but one of the issues happens with late practices. And obviously, since the school day moved to a later spot, the basketball courts are occupied until nine o'clock by the varsity. So if that were feasible to have multiple uses and make opportunities for youth sports or other sports to come in at eight o'clock instead of nine o'clock, not on game nights, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's, I mean, ultimately, that's our goal, is again, to provide more space for the, this will again, help, hopefully, help provide more space for youth programming through every season.
If I could follow up. Given the newness of this, just in terms of working with you and any others on scheduling, obviously, the fall is, it is what it is. But is the best thing to do to start working with you to sort of figure out what we can do? And then we, you know, we deal with December as events move forward?
Sure, I think the first.
Can you repeat that, Mark, just for folks watching?
Sorry. The question was, should we start working on youth programming in December now to plan for any space that needs to happen? Planning for any space that needs to happen outside of the district moving forward, right? So I think the first step in the process for us would be to work with the WHS coaches to figure out a plan. And then after that, would be working with the youth programs to see what space is then available after that. So, you know, my plan is to work with the winter coaches about a practice schedule, hopefully, in the not so distant future, so that we can provide that information to youth programming as well.
And I know time is tight, but do you anticipate that we could get to that before the end of June?
I'm hoping we can get to that before the end of June, yes.
Okay. Given that this program has expenses and so on and so forth, does, has anyone talked about or anticipate any changes in fee structures for rentals going forward?
I was wondering, we didn't turn your head around.
So the question was, is there any anticipation for changes in fee structures moving forward for rentals?
So a couple of things. We're looking at the fee structures now anyway because we're, you know, they haven't really been updated for a while. And as we've been coming out of COVID and starting to use our facilities again, we've run into some unique situations and scenarios that weren't true pre-COVID. In terms of the fee structure going up as a result of the project, it would be no. And obviously, we don't look to make a profit on fees, but we want to make sure that we're covering our costs. So that's a school committee conversation eventually because it is a policy. But Andrew Maron, Director of Finance and Operations, and I have been having that discussion. Eventually, we'll bring forward some recommendations to the school committee around that. I think, I just want to go back also to, from a programming standpoint, one, I also want to mention Mr. Mahoney in a sidebar conversation with me talked about the fact that we can bring the entire student body into this space with the reconfiguration and the number of seats that the bleachers will provide us, which is something we can come close to now, which is a huge advantage. But also to the badminton question, I think somebody said the programming, we're still working on the program. We're here tonight to hear from you. And we've noted, I've noted, the question around badminton. There's some other questions that this is part of the process for us. So over the next few weeks, we're taking this feedback. We'll be working with the design team in figuring out what we can accommodate. Clearly, we want to accommodate as much as we can. It's everyone's interest, from our interest to the community's interest to try to make these spaces as usable and flexible as possible, anticipation of the amount of use that they'll get too.
I have one more.
No, you don't. You've got one more and a follow up.
I heard, and it makes all sense in the world, that equipment that can be reused, repurposed, that's going to be part of the deal. I'm not so sure about backboards and scoreboards, but to the extent it's useful or helpful, discussions with youth programs, if there's a way to, if that becomes a need, thinking about those things, I think that's an area where we could have some discussions and maybe be helpful to.
That was another sidebar conversation I had over there. I mean, the extent that we can, once we get the programming settled out, we can understand the scope of the budget and what we end up being able to cover, what the bids come in at, and just other ideas that are going to come up as we go. We absolutely would be looking for the possibility to get some outside funding if it was needed, and even giving people the opportunity too. So that's appreciated.
Frank?
Sure.
It just, one other thought occurred to me, Gary, to the question about the fee schedule. As some of you know, we've established a grass fund in town and a turf fund, kind of overseen by the field management committee. And that was set up many years ago. Especially the turf fund was important because the town recognized the turf doesn't last forever. It's going to have to be replaced. So for, and there's tiers, right? So if it's a Winchester youth group, that's a different tier than an outside group. But the intention was that we could start putting money into that account to offset the cost of replacement. So in this instance, this new floor is going to last much longer than an artificial turf field because we legit are expecting well over 40 years. It will not need to be sanded every other year either. So many districts, Mark has been talking to some of his colleagues, they're sanding every, you know, 10, 12, 13 years or something. But every two or three years, it may need to be rescreened. So there is a maintenance protocol for the space. If you've got any experience with this in your home, you know, when you refinish your floors, you could sand them down. You can put on new stain and change the look of the floors. It's very invasive, it can be pretty expensive. But if you've done your initial installation right and you have enough coats of polyurethane or whatever you used at the time, you can actually go in and rescreen, which is where you sort of scuff up that top surface after a while. It's like a wear layer, and you put down a new one. And that is what districts do with this. So this question did come up at town meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're trying to gather information now with some peer districts who have a similar sized facility to understand what their maintenance schedule is like and what the cost is like. I think it is realistic that that be a part of the conversation with superintendent and the school committee when we do look at the fee schedule. But to Frank's point, we're not looking to quote, "make money off this space", but we need to get a handle on what that cost looks like. I expect it's actually very modest, but it will be a somewhat regular thing. So whether that's every three years, every four years, we'll figure that out and I think wrap that into our conversation around fees.
I'd like to rephrase my comment about making money. We're looking to soak every outside group we can. So, you know, we will be looking at the outside as we do have different, kind of kidding, but outside fee structures. So that's got to be part of the equation for us to, because the hope is we may be able to get more outside organizations who can use this space, not at the expense of internal and community base, but I think there's money to be made for us to really do some of what Chris talked about.
Are you guys incorporating a broadcast booth like a lot of others? Does that complicated being incorporated into the complicated?
So the question was, are we incorporating a broadcast booth to? So there's no plan to have a broadcast booth at the, in the gym. Normally, Wind Cam will film from the top of the bleachers or use the huddle camera. And then the, all the game workers will be at the scorer's table, which we have a brand new scorer's table that was donated by the Winchester Sports Foundation.
For varsity games, somebody asked me this question.
I thought you said here one more question. Okay.
For varsity games, do you anticipate for hoop volleyball wrestling that both bleachers will be pressed there? So you'll have one focal point? Or are you anticipating bleacher curtain?
It depends. So the question was, do we anticipate driving the bleachers over for every game or every varsity game? No, so it depends on the game and what we're expecting for a crowd. There are some games where there's just going to be necessary to pull out one bleacher, put the curtain down. A lot of times during the regular season, the capacity on one side will be able to fit, with the exception of if a game, you know, if a game is going to decide a league championship and we know it's going to be a huge crowd. But the way we have games set up in our league and pretty much throughout the season, we'll have subvocity games going on at the same time on both courts. And then, once those are over, the varsity will play on one of the courts. And we won't, we won't need to, in most cases, drive the bleachers over, but there will be, I don't say, I don't want to say in most cases, but, you know, more often than not, we won't need to drive the bleachers over because there'll be a subvocity game going on on that other court as well.
So you'd have crush JV maybe same time?
Correct, and then varsity would play after.
But if it's Wuburn and it's going to be big, maybe two bleachers?
Or JV's playing simultaneously, and then both varsities following that.
Where are the?
So right now, the huddle camera is, you know, just covers the main court. It's above where the windows are into the fitness center. So in this layout, the huddle cameras would be above both bleachers. So about both big sets of bleachers, the huddle camera would be above them, high above them.
So looking at?
Looking at each of these courts.
Looking at those courts at the same time?
Yes. Sorry, say that again?
So when the view is, you see both volleyball courts, you see both teams competing from the side?
It's a horizontal view, yes.
As opposed to a lot of huddle cameras go behind the players, like parts of your, trying to walk to Winchester.
No, so our huddle cameras on the opposite side of the court from where the players sit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and that will be the same in this setup as well, but in two, on two different courts.
Handicap seating? And?
I'll let Chris answer this.
Yeah, there'll be handicap seating. Each of these bleacher sections comes with sections that don't deploy out and include handicap seating at the very front leading edge. And so it's all prescribed by code, the amount that you need per seating section, and we'll follow that.
So last call for any other questions. I want to thank everybody for coming. This was good, we got some good questions, especially around some programming. We can have some follow up with Chris and his team. Really looking forward to getting the project out to bid this summer. And an update for everybody at Fall Town Meeting. I think that'll be exciting. If it's going really quick, we might have another field trip during Fall Town Meeting and go look at the new floor. John?
So Chris, can you just tell people where they can go to get updates? When the project's going to start, who you hire for the monitor, what the final design is?
Yeah, so for updates, they can email. It's the ninefallens that come and say, is that the email? Right, so, okay. Well, I thought you were volunteering, John. So we, you know, we have a project website for the Lynch Construction Project, as I hope you all know. We don't have a website for this, but I think what we can do, so John was just asking, where can people go for updates? I think we can do an update on the district website. We've, Andrew has helped us with this before for some other capital projects. So I think we do that at a minimum. And then we can also put this on as a standing item at school committee, school committee meetings. We do actually have a capital projects update coming up. Is that May 28th? Is that what? Next Tuesday. So I think we'll probably have this just as a standing item because, you know, time is short. And we will, we'll keep the select board updated as well. And we're just really excited about it. Somebody, it was actually Bob Deering made this comment at town meeting. Bob was our longtime chair of EFPBC. He was chair for, what, like 20 years or something, Jay? He made a really good point to town meeting members, which is that when we partnered with the MSBA on the high school, if we had built a new high school, they would not have given us an auditorium this size. They would have given us one 20% smaller. They told us our stage was 30% too big. And at the gymnasium, it was about 30% too big. But when you take an existing building and you're renovating it, you get to keep the space that you have. So that was a plus on renovating this building. But because that space was so large, there was really very little they would partner with us on in doing any work there. So that's really why that gym, it was essentially some new windows, which I would say, for those who are familiar with the old gym, transformed the space, but it's windows and paint. MSBA was not going to partner with us on anything else. And so, Gary, it might have been you who actually said at the mic a couple of weeks ago that, you know, getting this project going really kind of completes the package. The state was a great partner for everything, but really had no interest in working with us upstairs. So it's exciting to kind of really get this done. So thank you guys very much for coming and for all your questions. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Gary.